Together. John's Gospel, Chapter fifteen and verse eight. I'm sure some of the young people would know this verse by heart. John's Gospel, Chapter fifteen and verse eight. Shall we all read together, prayerfully please? Herein is my Father glorified, that he bear much fruit, so shall he be my disciples. Now, along with this theme, shall we read a couple of portions from the Word of God? We will be referring to these portions again and again. So we'll turn to this portion. The first portion is in the Book of Genesis and Chapter one. Book of Genesis, Chapter one. We will read verses twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. As I'll be reading these three verses, you can look into your Bibles with a prayer that the Lord may speak to us. Genesis, Chapter one, verse twenty-six to twenty-eight. And God said, let us make man in our image, after our likeness, and let them have dominion over the fish of the sea, and over the fowl of the air, and over the cattle, and over all the earth, and over every creeping thing that creepeth upon the earth. So God created man in his own image. In the image of God created he him, male and female created he them. And God blessed them. And God said unto them, be fruitful, and multiply, and replenish the earth, and subdue it, and have dominion over the fish of the sea, and over the fowl of the air, and over every living thing that moveth upon the earth. Now, another portion from the Book of Isaiah and Chapter five. Book of Isaiah and Chapter five. The first two verses. Isaiah, Chapter five, verses one and two, again, as I read these two verses, kindly look into your Bibles. Now will I sing to my well-beloved, a song of my beloved touching his vineyard. My well-beloved hath a vineyard in a very fruitful hill, and he fenced it, and gathered out the stones thereof, and planted it with the choicest wine, and built a tower in the midst of it, and also made a winepress therein. And he looked that it should bring forth grapes, and it brought forth wild grapes. Now, shall we look to the Lord in prayer for his grace and help? Loving heavenly Father, our gracious God, our never-failing and never-changing God, the Father of all mercies, the giver of all good things, our covenant-keeping, faithful, true, and also our living God, the one who is from everlasting to everlasting, the one who is Alpha and Omega, the beginning and also the end, and the one who is in governance and control of everything, the one who has loved us above all with a great and an everlasting and a sacrificial love. And this love is an undeserving love towards us. It is a first love. It is a love which is unconditional. It is a love whose Lord Death we cannot find, a love which is as vast as the sea, a love which is an agape love. This morning, this evening, oh Lord, we come to thy throne of grace with gratitude and thanksgiving for your grace, your favor, your goodness, and loving kindnesses towards us, especially the flock that is in Bethel. We thank you, Lord, for being so gracious to us in Bethel, that, oh Lord, you have carried us through all these thirty-one years. Lord, as we heard, and we keep hearing again and again through thy servant, on how the work which began in a very small way, Lord, that was brought it thus far, adding the precious souls to thy flock, and also enabling many, oh Lord, to be brought into the truth, to be brought into the revelation of the person of the Lord Jesus Christ, as well as his church, which he purchased with his own precious blood. We thank you for carrying us on in Bethel year after year. Thank you for feeding thy flock. Thank you for the nourishment you have been granting to the precious people. Thank you for the guidance and the instruction you have been giving through thy servant, our dear brother Linus, and some of those who are cooperating with him, and also our dear sister Orfa, Lord, in catering and caring for the needs of thy precious flock. Thank you, Lord, we in Bethel, we are precious to you. And that is the reason why you not only sought and saved us, you have brought us into the fellowship of thy people. And, oh Lord, in being in this fellowship, how you have been taking care of us, how we have been meeting all our spiritual needs. For all this, loving Father, even this evening, as we have gathered together, Lord, our dear ones there, and some of our dear ones who are joining us online, and also me also, thanking you for the privilege you have given to me to join them, we all bow down at thy feet this evening. We exalt you, Lord, we adore you, we magnify you, we glorify you, because thou art so faithful towards us. You have not left us, you have not forsaken us, and like the children of Israel in Deuteronomy, Chapter two, and verse seven, we can also testify that we have lacked nothing whatsoever. We can also say, like the Psalmist David, the Lord is my shepherd, and I shall not want, we shall never want whatsoever. Because, oh Lord, you have been our good shepherd, you have been our guiding shepherd, you have been our feeding shepherd, you have been our satisfying shepherd, you have been our accompanying shepherd, you have also been our restoring shepherd, because there were times we have gone astray. But, oh Lord, you have drawn us nigh unto yourself again and again. And also, you have been a shepherd who is always concerned about us. You have been concerned about our welfare, and you are the one who causes your voice always to be heard. For all this, loving Father, we lift up our voices, gratitude and thanksgiving, praise and worship and adoration even this evening. Lord, we thank you by the help of the Spirit of God and by the burden you have given to thy precious people as a church in Bethel, to once again pray and have these three days of gatherings, this evening, the whole of tomorrow, both in the morning and also in the evening, and also on the Lord's day, both in the morning as well as in the evening. Thank you, Lord, for the burden you have given to thy servant also, Lord, to pray as a church, along with the church, and then to decide about these meetings. And, oh Lord, as we have been waiting upon you for the theme on which we should be meditating, Lord, thank you for leading us so clearly with regard to this theme also. Lord, you are the one who satisfies our needs. You are the one who knows what our spiritual requirements are. Accordingly, we believe you have given this theme to us. And now, as we dwell upon this theme, meditate upon this theme, Lord, you speak to us. Let not man speak to us, loving Father. Man cannot satisfy our needs. Man does not know how to cater to our needs, but thou knowest. Because, oh Lord, as the Scriptures declare, thou knowest everything about us, as we really read in John, Chapter two, and verse twenty-five. You know what is deep in our hearts, Lord, which cannot be expressed to others. Thou knowest that. Accordingly, thou will meet our individual needs during these meetings. Otherwise, oh Lord, our time and our efforts, our prayers will all be wasted. So this is our humble prayer. Lord, go on to meet my own need, the need of everyone in Bethel, and also corporately meet our need, loving Father. So may we be able to hear the voice of our Lord himself. Lord, you said, in thy precious word, open thy mouth wide, and I will fill it. By faith, oh Lord, we open our mouths, according to Psalm one hundred and nineteen, verse eighteen. Open thou mine eyes, that I may behold wondrous things out of thy love. So, Lord, open our spiritual eyes, spiritual understanding, that we may behold and get to know the things you have kept for us, stored for us for these three days. Lord, have mercy upon us. The Holy Spirit of God may be set at liberty to minister to our hearts this evening. And pray, Lord, as thou would speak, give us the grace not only to receive your word, but we may also be able to understand your word, and we may further be given your grace to obey whatever thou would speak to us. Help us not to be just hearers or appreciators, but help us to be doers and obeyers of your word. Only then, oh Lord, as thou was said in Matthew's Gospel, Chapter seven, we will be like that house that is built upon the rock, which will stand the storm and the wind. So, Lord, this is our request, this is our prayer this evening. Here our prayer. Thank you for all those who have been able to join physically and those who are online. We pray, Lord, there will not be any interruption whatsoever in the Internet. By faith, oh Lord, we bind all the powers of the evil one that may try to work against us or disturb us in the mighty and powerful name of the Lord Jesus Christ. We also remember those who are not able to join us for some reason or the other. We pray, Lord, thou will grant them their portion. None may be deprived of their share and portion. But we ask all this with thanksgiving, in the name of our Lord and our Savior, Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
John's Gospel, Chapter fifteen and verse eighteen. We read there, these are the words of the Lord Jesus Christ. And these are important, because not only they are from the Lord, from the mouth of the Lord, but also we know the context in which these, these words are spoken. Now the time had come for the Lord to depart from this world and to go to that very point where his purpose in coming to the world was going to be fulfilled, namely, going to Golgatha. Now is the time for him to move to get some money and then go on to Golgatha. And at that time, he took aside his disciples, and he was more concerned about them in preparing them, equipping them, and revealing to them his mind and his great counsel and purpose in choosing them as his disciples. Now the Lord is going to go back to heaven, and these are the disciples who are to carry on this work further upon this earth. And therefore, beginning from Chapter thirteen up to, uh, Chapter seventeen, which concludes with his prayer, actually, Chapter seventeen is the Lord's prayer. We think that what is given in the Gospel, our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, this is also being recited, like parrots among the cressanda. I don't criticize it, I don't blame, but dear beloved, that is not the Lord's prayer. He is given only a model, but if you have to find what the Lord's prayer actually is upon the earth, the greatest prayer of the Lord is in John's Gospel, Chapter seventeen. And I would urge you to read this chapter as slowly as possible and as often as possible. If you read the chapter, you will understand what the burden of the Lord was and what his prayer was upon this earth. He was not praying for himself. Only later on, after this prayer, came his personal prayer. And that prayer was for the cup. But here in Chapter seventeen, you will read those fragments, words coming again and again, then, then, for them, that they may. And this word, them and they, we know, speaks about the disciples. So the Lord had that burden upon them for the disciples and prayed that prayer. So in this portion, it is fitted in Chapter fifteen. And in this chapter, John's Gospel, Chapter fifteen, we read how the Lord is speaking about, uh, how they can bear fruit. And then he says, begins with the words, that he is the true wine. See, Chapter fifteen and verse one, I am the true wine, and my father is the husband-man. You could have just said, I am the wine, and my father is the husband-man, and you are the branches. But he says here, I am the true wine. That means there could also be a knuckly wine. There could be somebody else who could take the place, replace the place of our Lord Jesus as the wine. So that is a danger. And this is now nothing else but Satan and his subtle devices, and later on, it is also going to be the Antichrist. So the Lord calls himself as a true wine, because we read in John, Chapter fourteen and verse six. The Lord Jesus said, I am the way, the truth, and the life. He is truth, there is truth in him. And this truth only went on to deliver us, give freedom to us. That's why in John's Gospel, Chapter eight, we did, we shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free. So therefore, there is nothing wrong when he says, I am the true wine. There is truth in him. So speaking about himself as the true wine, he is calling his father as the husband-man. And then he is calling you and I as the branches. What a wonderful picture we find here. See, and this portion speaks about fruitfulness. The fruitfulness, on the one side, first of all, we take the Father who is in heaven, who is the husband-man. And the Lord Jesus Christ, who came into this world and has gone back to the Father, who is the true wine. And you and I are the branches in this wine. And there is a place for the Holy Spirit of God also here. It is the Holy Spirit of God who works in us, enabling us to bring forth fruit. See the picture here, the Trinity is here. The Trinity is at work. And alongside this Trinity, for the bearing of the fruit, you and I are included. Without you, the Trinity also cannot do anything. What a wonderful thought it is. The Lord in his will, he has not put the order this way, Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit, and the angels. Do we find that? No, not at all. See the sour and will of God. Who are we after all? What is our life? We are so frail. Our life is so uncertain. As we read in the Book of James, man is like a vapor, you see him for a while and disappears. That's what we are seeing these days, all over the world. In our country in India, how people are just passing away because of this pandemic. Some, they are rushed to the hospital, within hours, they pass away. Some, they are there for two or three days and they pass away, young and old. So man's life is so uncertain, so brief upon this earth, but yet, in spite of all that, the Lord has put us in that, uh, what do I say, in that plan to make us to bring forth fruit. We'll go on to see now what are the purposes. So here, in these words, these words that the Lord Jesus Christ spoke, he is mentioning, when we come to verse eight, he says, herein is my Father glorified, that he bear much fruit, so shall he be my disciples. This is where, this is where the Lord is conveying his desire to the disciples. And what is that desire? That they should bear much fruit. What for? That they may bring glory to the Father in heaven, but they will also be known as disciples upon this earth. So this is where our theme comes, in the middle of the verse, that he bear much fruit. So this is the theme that we are going to be meditating upon during these days. Now, the words, to bear fruit. That means, in other words, he wants us to be fruitful. Now, when the Lord says to bear fruit or to be fruitful, it is not a physical thought or meaning that the Lord means here. It speaks about our spiritual fruit-bearing. And also, mind you here, in John, Chapter fifteen and verse eight, it says, that he bear much fruits. Is that what we will finally read there? No. He says, that he bear much fruit in the singular. Why, why does the Lord say that? The word he is a collective noun, that means you all. In, uh, those of you who are having, uh, King James Version, which is the best, as far as I can say, you find the word y-e, that means e. That is a plural noun, that means it speaks about we all, you all. But in the other translations, instead of e, straight away, they have gone ahead, putting the word you, y-o-u. So there, uh, that word, in this verse, does not convey the right meaning. What the Lord means is, you all bear fruit. He was telling, addressing his disciples, my dear disciples, you bear fruit. He, but he has not said, bear fruits. He is using the singular. Why, what is the meaning of that? It speaks about a spiritual fruit. And as we know, in Galatians, Chapter five, and verse twenty-two, it is the fruit of the spirit. And we see that as a nine-fold fruit, isn't it? Shall we turn to the Book of Galatians, Chapter five, and I'm reading verses twenty-two and twenty-three. Notice the word, fruit, singular coming here. But the fruit of the spirit is love, joy, peace, long-suffering, gentleness, goodness, faith, meekness, temperance, against such there is no law. Have you counted how many are there? There are nine items mentioned here. All these put together is one fruit. And that is called as a fruit of the spirit. And the Lord's desire is that we must bear much of this nine-fold fruit, that is the meaning here. Now, to understand this, let me give you an example. You take an orange, it is called one fruit, isn't it? And when you peel the skin, what do you find inside? So many slices of oranges, oranges are there. Now, do you call each slice a fruit? No. All the slices enclosed in that skin of the orange, it is called as one orange or one fruit. That is what the Lord means here. The Lord wants you and I to be that nine-fold fruit. So he wants us to bear that fruit. And he says, you must bear much fruit, that is the Lord's desire. And so, that is why he said to the disciples, because the entire work of the Lord is going to be carried on primarily through these disciples. They went on to become the first propagators of the Gospel. They want to, they went on to become the first evangelists in this world, and they went on to become the first ambassadors of Christ. Only as later on, by their gospel, by their preaching, others, when they came into the fold of the Lord, then they also became evangelists, they also became ambassadors. And down the line, over the past two thousand and twenty years and more, you and I also have become evangelists. You and I have become the ambassadors of Christ. But the Lord wanted this work to begin with him, with them. And that is why he says, you must start bearing fruit. You must start having this nine-fold fruit. And he does not say fruit, but he says, much fruit. If in John's Gospel, Chapter fifteen, again, we find three degrees of fruit there. We find in verses one and two, fruit. And then, at the end of the verse two, we see a mention of that it may bring forth more fruit. Fruit, more fruit. And then, when we come to verse five, we did about much fruit, and also in verse eight again, much fruit. Verse five, I am the wine, you are the branches. He that abireth in me, and I in him, the same bringeth forth much fruit; for without me you can do nothing. So do you see those three degrees there? Fruit, more fruit, and much fruit. So it is only when we bear much fruit that we are able to bring glory to God, and more than that, we are going to be identified as the disciples of the Lord Jesus Christ. Now the Lord is going to get back to heaven. Now the disciples have to carry on this work. And how are they going to be known as disciples? Not because the Lord had chosen them, not because the multitudes came to know that these twelve are the disciples of this man, the Lord Jesus Christ, nor. Hereafter, after the Lord Jesus Christ's ascension to heaven, thereafter, these people are going to be, going to be known as disciples only by their fruit. That's why in Matthew's Gospel, we read, the Lord Jesus said, they shall know you by your fruit. So it is by fruit we are, we are known to others. The fruit in us, this much fruit, the fruit of the spirit that is in us, reveals and shows to others that we are truly the disciples of the Lord Jesus Christ. For example, the first aspect of the fruit of the spirit is love. So when we have this love of God in us, when we have the love of the Lord Jesus in us, which is a sacrificial love, we are able to show to others this love, and then they are able to realize, this is, this love is not humanly possible. This love cannot be obtained by, uh, learning or teaching or by money or anything whatsoever. This is something peculiar, this love is something peculiar, it's beyond, beyond human love. And this is what is called as a love of God. So then they come to know why we have this love, because we are followers of the Lord Jesus Christ. Then they identified as, as the disciples of the Lord Jesus. As I, I think, mentioned in one of my ministry messages, about the boy who was selling oranges on a railway platform. And when somebody hit the basket and all the oranges fell, this boy was crying. And the man who hit that basket, he realized the great loss for this boy. And he picked up all the oranges that had fallen down and then put them into the basket. And in addition, he took out some money from his pocket and thrust it into his pocket. And he was running away to catch a train. This boy was bewildered. He said, what is this? At one, at one moment, I thought, I have incurred a great loss for the day. But immediately, within a short time, I have discovered that. But immediately, within a short time, I've discovered that I'm not at a loss, but I am at a gain. And then as this man was trying to run and catch the train, this boy held on to that man and asked him one question. I just want to ask you one question, are you Jesus? Are you Jesus? This man said, no, I'm not Jesus, why are you asking me? Then he said, only Jesus can do this. When Jesus can love like this, see, he is the disciple. So through such fruit of the spirit, we will be known as the Lord's disciples. So the Lord wants this nine-fold fruit to be, to be, we, the Lord wants us to be bearing this nine-fold fruit in abundance. That's why he says, bear, that he bear much fruit, that is the Lord's desire. Now let us understand the meaning of this theme and what this much fruit is. Now, as I mentioned, to bear fruit means to be fruitful. And it is not only the Lord's desire to the disciples and instruction to the disciples, we find that this is the Lord's desire right from the beginning. That's why we find in the book of Genesis, the very first book of the Bible, the very first chapter itself, we find these words in verse twenty-eight. Genesis, chapter one and verse twenty-eight. And God blessed them, and God said unto them, be fruitful and multiply, and replenish the earth, and subdue it. See the words of the Lord? The Lord created everything as we know, in five days. The wonderful creation which we are seeing. And the creation which man, namely the scientists, and the great people of wisdom have not yet fully discovered. There is much more to discover from the Lord's creation upon this earth and in this universe. So the Lord created everything, just in the word of the mouth. But on the sixth day, he created a man. And he created man with a great purpose. And that purpose is conveying too, it's being conveyed in verse twenty-eight. And God blessed them, and God said unto them, be fruitful and multiply. What is the word be fruitful? This does not mean only being physically fruitful or in their bodies, but it has got a greater meaning, it has got a spiritual meaning, that they have to be spiritually fruitful also. For, why do I say that? Because when you look at the life of Joseph, we read that Joseph was also fruitful. His father mentions in, uh, Genesis, chapter forty-nine and verse twenty-two, Joseph is a fruitful thou. That doesn't mean Joseph had hundreds of children, no, no, no. The father could notice the spiritual fruitfulness in Joseph. You see, the fruit of the spirit, the life of Joseph. That's again, another study. You can go read, if you read carefully the life of Joseph, we find the fruit of the spirit in Joseph. And how was Joseph? He was fruitful. Joseph's bow was fruitful. He's a fruitful thou, the word of God says. Jacob had twelve branches, namely his twelve sons. Eleven branches were empty, they were not bearing fruit, or let me even say, they were not bearing good fruit. They were not bearing much fruit, they were not bearing spiritual fruit. But whereas Joseph, he bore spiritual fruit, fruit of the spirit and much fruit. That's why God was glorified in him through his life. So much so, Pharaoh asked about Joseph, uh, Pharaoh mentioned about Joseph, after interacting with him concerning the dream that he got, after Joseph interpreted the dream, he gave him also a very wise counsel. So when Pharaoh hea- heard all these, in Genesis, chapter forty-one, we read, Pharaoh is making this remark. Can we find a man as this, in whom the spirit of God is? The spirit of God was there. When the spirit of God is there, the fruit of the spirit is bound to be there. And that's what we find in Joseph. A Pharaoh, the Pharaoh heathen, he glorified God. Because of the life and the testimony and the fruitfulness of Joseph. So when the Lord said here, to, concerning Adam and Eve, be fruitful, it speaks about bearing spiritual fruit. Now let us see the background in which the Lord is mentioning or conveying his great desire. We have seen that it is a Lord's desire that we should be fruitful. And this is beginning, the, the Lord revealing this desire begins in the book of Genesis itself, just after creation of man, or just after the creation of the universe. He said, be fruitful. Now let us see the context or background in which this instruction is coming to, the first man, or the first man and the woman. We find first of all, that in verses twenty-six and twenty-seven, that the Lord created this man in his own image. The man whom he created, we know how he created man. When it came to the entire universe, the creation of the universe, the Lord just uttered these words, let there be, and it came to be. It is there even till today. During the course of the day, we have seen the sun. Now as we are coming to night, we are going to see the moon and the stars. How did they come? Not just like that, the Lord said, let there be sun, moon and stars. And they are there, even till today, that is Lord's creation. Like that, he created everything, but when it came to man, the Lord did not say, let there be a man, let there be a woman. The Lord had said that, that would have been possible. Man would have been created, woman also would have been created, no. Man was special. The Lord had a great purpose in this man. Even though he took the man out of the dust of the ground, even though his life is going to be very fragile, very brief, like a shadow which decreases, like the wind that passes away, but still, man has been special to him. That's why Isaiah forty-three, verse four, the Lord says, thou hast been precious, and thou hast been honorable, he says. Man was to be precious to him. Man was honorable to God. Not God being honorable to us, which is true, but the Lord says, you have not only been precious, you have been honorable. So man was something special, something unique for the Lord. And therefore, he created man by himself. We know in chapter two, he took the dust of the ground and he shaped to this man. Now how did he shape this man? How did he make this man? We read in this verse, verse twenty-six, and God said, let us make man in our image, after our likeness. See those words? Kindly notice that, uh, noun, collective noun. And God said, let us, our image, our likeness. Here again, we find the Trinity is at work. God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit, together, they came for the creation of man, creating this man. And how is this man being created? In God's image, in God's likeness. So that is how he was created. Verse twenty-seven, so God created man in his own image. In the image of God created him, male and female created in them. Both man and woman, they were created in the image of God. If anybody had gone to the Garden of Eden, where Adam and Eve were there for a very brief while, they would have seen God and man as father and son, as father and daughter. What a wonderful thing, isn't it? The Lord did not give even the image of an angel to man. Leave alone giving any other image that he created. Today, when we get angry, we say, you're a donkey, you are a monkey and all, isn't it? We ought, should not be doing that. Man has been created in God's image. So this is the first thing we read about man. Man has been created in the image of God, what a wonderful thing it is. The dust having the image of God. The dust reflecting the beauty and the countenance of God. Really beloved, we cannot understand this great and lofty thought of the Lord, isn't it? He was created in God's image. And then secondly, in verse twenty-eight, it says, God blessed them. He not only created them in his own image, secondly, we find here that God also went on to bless them. He did not wait for man to do something and then be pleased with him and then to bless him. Because that was not going to happen, what did man do? So soon after his creation, he disobeyed God. So this blessing is an unconditional blessing. So, the Lord blessed them. It is not any man's blessing, it is the Lord's blessing itself. And what is the sign of the Lord's blessing? We did in Hebrews, chapter twenty-two and verse ten, the blessing of the Lord, it maketh rich and addeth no sorrow with it. That is a sign of the blessing. That means, when the Lord blessed them, there will not be any sorrow. But when they committed the sin, what happened? They began experiencing sorrow, that's what we read in chapter three. In sorrow, man will till the ground. In sorrow, the woman will conceive her seed, bring forth her seed also. See? But till then, the blessing of the Lord was there upon them. First of all, he gave his own image to them, secondly, he is giving his own blessing. It is not that man after being created, asked the Lord to bless them, like Jacob. Jacob would not allow the Lord to leave him unless the Lord would bless him. Because Jacob understood by experience, it is the blessing of the Lord that makes him rich. It is a blessing of the Lord which will not add any sorrow to him. But here, without even asking, the man was blessed by God. Then thirdly, we read in verse twenty-eight further down, in the middle of the verse, he says, we fruitful and multiply and replenish the earth and subdue it, and have dominion over the fish of the sea, over the fowl of the air, and over everything that moveth upon the earth. He is now bestowing authority to this man. First of all, he gave his own image, secondly, he is blessing them. So they are going to be truly blessed people, happy people, joyful people, they will not, they will not to have any sorrow. And then thirdly, they were also given dominion over all that the Lord created. He did not pass on this authority to the angels of God. He passed on this authority to the man who was taken from the dust. Again, another wonderful thing, which we cannot understand. Everything was put under the control of man, that's why even now, man is controlling God's creation. He has not created the creation, he, but he is controlling the creation. And then fourthly, we see in verse seven. And the Lord, I'm sorry, chapter two and verse seven, chapter two and verse seven. And the Lord God formed man of the dust of the ground and breathed into his nostrils the breath of life, and man became a living soul. He breathed into his nostrils the breath of life, that means the very life of God. The very spirit of God was given to man. What a wonderful thing, isn't it? The spirit of God is not given even to the angels of God. They are only created for his purpose, to serve him and also to serve us. But man has been given the unique spirit of God. What a privilege it is. And he also became a living soul. So when the Lord breathed into his man's nostrils, man went on to have a twin life. He had the physical life and he also had the spiritual life. But when he committed sin, we know, he lost the spiritual life. Even though he went on to have the physical life, he did not have the spiritual life. But again, in the life of Joseph, we see how Joseph had the spirit of God. And that is why Pharaoh was able to identify that and said, can we find a man as this, in whom the spirit of God is? So Pharaoh was able to identify that. So fourthly, man was given this twin life, the spiritual life and also the physical life. In the physical life, he was to bring forth physical fruit. But with the spiritual life only, he can bear spiritual fruit. That is why he gave the spirit of God to man, because he wanted man to be fruitful. To be fruitful in a spiritual manner, to bear spiritual fruit, to bear fruit of the spirit. This nine-fold fruit of the spirit in him. And that's why he breathed into his, into his nostrils, his own spirit. So man went on to have the spirit of God, man went on, man went on to have the twin life. And then fifthly, we find in chapter two, if we read verses nineteen and twenty, here we see how man became a partner with the Lord in creation. The Lord created everything by the word of his mouth, and then God created man with his own hands. But who would name all that God created? It was man. Again, it was not given to the angels of God. But a boxing is to say, it seems that the Lord was creating man, the angels from heaven would have been looking at great wonder. Very curiously, they would, they would be looking, it seems, what is God doing? What is he doing upon this earth? They, they saw how God was creating everything. And then, he was taking the dust and making like a doll, an image. And then they were looking very intently. And then, he breathed into his nostrils, and man became a living soul, and he went on to have the image of God. So there they are saying, you don't even have this image, look at this man, taken from the dust, he is, he's having the image of God. And now, what is God doing? He is asking man to give the name to all that he created. He brought all the animals, everything before man, and is telling Adam, go on to give the names. This is what angels are not able to understand. So there are boxing is to say, they would have even complained to the Lord, it seems, Lord, what are we doing? Have you forgotten that we are in heaven? Don't you at least give an opportunity for each one of us to give a name to each something that you have created? The Lord says, the Lord would say, it seems, it is not for you, it is for my son. It is for the one whom I created. Why? He is precious to me. That's why I have given my image to him. He is honorable in my sight, and therefore, this privilege is given only to man. See what an honor God bestowed upon this man. That whatever he created, man gave the name. So other animals were brought, birds were brought, and the fishes were also brought. And the Lord says, Adam, now my job is over. I've finished the part of creation, and now I give you the responsibility. I give you this job of giving names to all that I created. And perhaps Adam could have said, Lord, me, I'm also one of the creation. How can I give the name? I do not know, why you created all these things? Why you created those beautiful birds? Why you created this ferocious, ferocious animal? And who am I to give the names? The Lord said, I want you to be a partner with me in creation. This creation is not complete unless and until you name everything that I have created. This dealable, this is what we cannot understand. This is what I am amazed at. Man taken from the dust to become the partner with God in creation. What a wonderful and a lofty thought it is. So these are the five things we find. First of all, he was created in the image of God. Then secondly, he, God went on to bless them. Thirdly, the Lord gave dominion and authority over all that he created to this man. And then fourthly, man had the privilege of having the very spirit of God. He became a living soul. And he had a twin life. The physical life and the spiritual life, the life of God. And then fifthly, he went on to become a partner in God's creation. What a wonderful thing it is. Now, after doing all this, in verse twenty-eight, the Lord is looking at man and is telling him, "You be fruitful and multiply." This is the instruction, the very first instruction the Lord is giving to him. Not any other instruction. He did not say, "You go and till the ground. You go and do this, you go and do that." No, "You go and observe all my creation and appreciate that." And the Lord said straight away, "You be fruitful." This is the first instruction that the Lord gave to man. Now, why did the Lord give this instruction to man? Kindly turn to the book of Isaiah and chapter forty-three. Book of Isaiah and chapter forty-three, and I'm reading verse seven. Isaiah, chapter forty-three and verse seven. "Even everyone that is called by my name, for I have created him for my glory. I have formed him, yea, I have made him." See, now we saw the creation, the nature of creation of God in Genesis, chapter one. Now we see the purpose of God's creation, namely, the purpose of God creating man upon this earth. We see the instruction also. Now we need to know why he gave that instruction. See, in verse seventy, he says, "I have created him for my glory." Man was to bring, man's main purpose, the main agenda the Lord gave to man was, "You should be for my glory, by your life, by your work, by whatever you do. You have to bring glory to me, Adam. My dear Eve, you have to bring glory to me, not to yourselves, not to anyone, or not to anything. You have to bring glory to me. You have to glorify me." This was a great purpose of God. But man miserably failed in that. Now, how do we bring glory to God? The word of God says, tells us at least five ways in which we can, or four ways, let me be specific, four ways in which we can bring glory to God. There are many ways, but we will see only four ways by which we can bring glory to God. The first way in which we can bring glory to God, let us see quickly, in Psalm fifty, five zero, Psalm fifty and verse twenty-three. Psalm fifty and verse twenty-three. "Whoso offereth praise glorified me." Whosoever offers praise, he brings glory to God. Anyone who worships the Lord, he brings glory to God. So this is how we glorify God first of all. Are we doing that? Did we do that this morning when we woke up? To glorify the Lord, to exalt the Lord, to magnify the Lord, to adore him for what he is, for what he has done, for what is accomplishing in our lives, for the great salvation that he has given to us. So those who worship the Lord, they are those who glorify the Lord. The worshippers are glorifiers of God. Then secondly, we find in the same Psalm, verse fifteen. "And call upon me in the day of trouble; I will deliver thee, and thou shalt glorify me." Through our prayer life, we will also be able to glorify God. First of all, through our worship, we glorify the Lord. And the enemy knows that, daily believer. And through our prayer life also, we bring glory to God. So enemy knowing that, he brings every obstacle possible in our glorifying the Lord and also in our praying to the Lord. That's why you see, on the Lord's day, when we gather first of all, and mainly to worship the Lord around the table, it is here, the enemy brings all sorts of hindrances. He will delay us in coming to the house of God. He will delay us in joining for worship. Some problem will crop up. Even sickness also will come, our children, they will fall sick. And somebody will come, step in that time only to visit us. So many obstacles, why? The enemy does not want you to go to the house of God, into his presence, to worship. I don't know if you have noticed this, daily in the mornings also, as you want to eagerly worship the Lord, he will try to bring some obstacle. Why? If you worship, you are going to glorify God. No, enemy does not want that. And on the day of prayer, much more. I could see this in my own life. Whenever I go for prayer, enemy knows two things. When we gather for prayer, particularly as a church, we are going to wield great power and also secondly, we are going to glorify God. These two things he cannot tolerate, he cannot bear it. That is why he will bring all sorts of obstacles when we go for worship, when we gather for worship, and also when we gather for prayer. Take one in daily believer. It is not because of any other reason. This is mainly the enemy's strategy and the enemy's attack against you. So you be very watchful and careful. So secondly, we can glorify the Lord through our prayer life. Here the psalmist says, "Call upon me," the Lord is saying these words, "call upon me in the day of trouble; I will deliver thee, and thou shalt glorify me." So when you pray and receive your answers, you glorify me. So through our prayer life, we bring glory to God. Then thirdly, in Matthew's Gospel, chapter five and verse sixteen. It's a very familiar verse to us. Let us still refer to our Bibles and read this verse. Matthew's Gospel, chapter five and verse sixteen. "Let your light so shine before men, that they may see your good works and glorify your Father, which is in heaven." How is God glorified through our good works? We know, daily believer, I also mentioned last time, that we were full of many works in our lives. We were full of dead works. Our works were works of darkness. Our works were unfruitful works. Our works were works of wickedness. Because we were leading such a life. We were dead in our trespasses and sin. We were in darkness. We were in wickedness. And therefore, these works were in us. But when we came to the Lord, when he forgave us of our sins, when we were washed and cleansed by the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ, these are the, there was a new, we were, we were made as a new creature. All things passed away, that is, all these works, dead works, dark works, unfruitful works, works of wickedness, they passed away. And the place of that, the Lord has brought good works into us. But the question is, are you formed with those good works? Or is it a combination of good works and also the bad works? This, this, this cannot happen, daily believer. Either we should be formed with good works or with works that are not good. But if you are a true child of God, there must be these good works seen in us. And how are these good works? These good works are like light that shine, it seems. That's why the Lord Jesus himself, he is seeing these, saying these words, "That they may see your good works." And then he says, "It is like a light." How can they see your good works? His good works, they shine like a light. And we know we are all in a dark world. In this dark world, the midst of the people who are in darkness, people who are dark, people who are themselves darkness, that was our past condition. In Ephesians, chapter five and verse eight, apostle Paul says, "You were sometimes darkness." It is not that we were in darkness and darkness was in us, we ourselves were darkness. So when world is in such a state, you and I, who have the light of God, you and I, who have been brought from darkness into light, this marvelous light, what do we do? We shine as lights in this world. That's why Paul says, again, in the same verse, Ephesians, chapter five, verse eight, and also in verse ten, "Walk as children of light." So in this world, where everything is mobile, we move as mobile lights of the Lord in this dark world. And how, how, how are we able to move as lights? With our good works, they shine for the Lord. So when they see our good works, they glorify God. So that is how, thirdly, we are able to bring glory to the Lord. First of all, through our life of worship. Secondly, through our life of prayer. Then thirdly, through our good works, we are able to glorify the Father who is in heaven. Then fourthly, I would like to mention John fifteen and verse eight. "When we bear much fruit, the Father in heaven is glorified." When they find this, when others, the people of the world, find this ninefold fruit in you and I, love, joy, peace, patience, long suffering, and all the things, they are then able to bring glory to the Father in heaven. Because normally, all those who are born in this world cannot be found even with a single fruit of the spirit. Even that single thing also you cannot find in them. But the believer, the world finds the ninefold spirit of God. And this is what is called as the fruit of the spirit, much fruit. And when we bear such fruit, we are able to bring glory to God. So this is how God created man for his glory, so that through a life of worship, life of prayer, and by our good works, and also by bearing fruit. There are other ways also, by our suffering also, we bring glory to God. So our main emphasis is on bearing fruit and bringing glory to the Father. But what happened in the creation? When God had created man and woman to bring glory to God through their fruitfulness, and that is why he gave that instruction to them, "Be fruitful and multiply." But what did this man do? He failed in this task. He failed to bring glory to the Lord. And this is where we find the Lord's desire. The Lord's purpose seems, seem to have been shattered. No, the Lord's purposes will never change. They cannot be altered at all. And that is why we find the Lord is giving the same instruction again and again in the book of Genesis. Now, he did not stop his instruction with Adam. And then after he failed to bring glory to God by his fruitful life, the Lord did not put a full stop there. We read in the subsequent chapters, how, when we come to chapter six, we see about the wickedness of man. When man, when man failed, God, when he disobeyed God, sin entered into him. He lost the spiritual life. And then we see the degradation of man. And also how the departure of man from God. He went far and far away from God. He was not able to bear any fruit at all, but even then, see the Lord's purposes. And when we come to chapter six, we read there about the wickedness of man. The wickedness of man was so great, we read in chapter six, "That Lord repented why he made man on the earth." In verse three, Genesis, chapter six and verse three, we read, "And the Lord said, 'My spirit shall not always strive with man.'" See the disappointment of the Lord. How much the Lord gave up upon man. And when we come to verse six, and it repented, I'm reading verses five and six. "And God saw that the, that the wickedness of man was great in the earth, and that every imagination of the thoughts of his heart was only evil continually." Verse six, "And it repented the Lord that he had made, made man on the earth, and it grieved him at his heart." See, what a grief the Lord had because of man. Instead of being glorified, instead of being pleased with the life of man, instead of being satisfied with man. See the disappointment of the Lord. Man brought grief to the Lord. And we know what happened thereafter, how the Lord destroyed everything in the floods during the days of Noah. And now we know the entire story of Noah, I'm not going to go into it. Now, when Noah was asked to step out of the ark, see what the Lord is telling Noah. See the instruction the Lord is giving to Noah. See Genesis, chapter eight and verse seventeen, verse sixteen and seventeen. "Go forth of the ark, thou and thy wife, and thy sons, and thy sons' wives with thee. Bring forth with thee every living thing that is with thee, of all flesh, both of fowl and of cattle, and of every creeping thing that creepeth upon the earth, that they may breed abundantly in the earth." Now notice these words. "And be fruitful and multiply on the earth." See the instruction again. Now only Noah and his family is left, and see the desire of the Lord. See the purpose he has got for man. See how he longs for man to bring glory to God. And therefore, he is telling Noah, "Be thou fruitful and multiply." Again, in chapter nine, verse one. "And God blessed Noah and his sons, and said unto them, 'Be fruitful and multiply, and rippen is thee the earth.'" Again, in verse seven, we find the same words. Because the Lord's purposes will never change. Man may try to change or alter the purpose of God, even Satan wanted to do that, but that can never happen. And then, not only there, if you go on to see that the Lord gave the same instruction to, it is given as a promise to Abraham. We find that later on in chapter seventeen and verse six, we don't have time, and I'm just mentioning that. And then, when the Lord gave that promise, Abraham understood that. And then if you come to chapter twenty-one, in verse thirty-three, we read there that Abraham planted a grou in Beersheba. Abraham was only a man of tent and altar and obedience to the Lord. But when we come to chapter twenty-one, Genesis, verse thirty-three, he is planting a grou. The actual meaning is, he planted fruit-bearing trees. So Abraham is entering into a fruitful life, figuratively a fruitful life. And then we see in chapter twenty-six and verse twenty-two, Genesis twenty-six and verse twenty-two, we see how Isaac also is becoming fruitful there. And then further we read, as we saw a little while ago, Joseph. His own father, he observed the life of Joseph, even though Joseph was away from the house after, after when he was thirteen years old. And now the father is beholding him, seeing him after seventeen years. Joseph was thirty years when he was, when he became the governor of the land. And thereafter, maybe after a few years, Jacob and, and his sons would have come there and observing the life of Joseph, comparing his life to his other children, he says, "Joseph, my son alone, is a fruitful power." So this is the Lord's intention. This is the Lord's purpose. And then it does not stop there, daily believer. And as we move on into the New Testament. As we saw in John's Gospel, chapter fifteen and verse eight, this parting advice. As a desire, the Lord is conveying to the As a desire, the Lord is conveying to the disciples that they bear much fruit. And when they bear much fruit, they will be identified as the disciples of the Lord upon the earth. And more importantly, more than that, they'll be able to bring glory to the Father which is in heaven. That is the Lord's desire even today. That's why this has been kept, kept recorded for us in the word of God. Herein is my Father glorified, that he bear much fruit. It doesn't say that he bore much fruit, that he will bear much fruit, but the Lord said that he bear. It's a present continuous tense. Every day we have to bear this fruit. And then every day, we'll be able to glorify the Father which is in heaven. May the Lord enable us to bring, bear such fruit and bring glory to the Father which is in heaven. Now this is all introduction, conveying only the one thought, the Lord's desire that we should bear fruit so that we can bring glory to him and will be identified as his disciples. Now, this evening, God willing, and in the other meetings, we'll see how we can bear such fruit. How we can be fruitful. How we can be fruit-bearing upon this earth. And may the Lord help us. Over to you, brother.
Brother, go ahead, brother. I will close with a prayer and then you take the veneration, brother.
Certainly, brother, certainly.
Let's pray. Blessed is the Lord, loving and living heavenly Father. Once again, Lord Father, we bow down before your presence with a heartfelt thanksgiving, praise, and worship for helping us, Father Lord, to enter into this evening and fulfilling, Father Lord, the desires of our heart. Father Lord, we have special meanings and also, Father Lord, bringing before us the theme from John, chapter fifteen, verse eight, that he may bear much fruit. Thank you, dear Godfather, for the various, various portions from the Old Testament, Father Lord, from the book of Genesis, and also, Father Lord, to the life of Adam, and also Noah, and Father Abraham, Isaac, and Joseph. Father Lord, the wonderful way thy servant has brought before us, Father Lord. Our Father also, the four foldways, five foldways, Father Lord. And we can also, with a fruitful life, glorify thy name. We thank thee, dear Godfather, and Father Satchyah, Father Lord. A man whose Father Lord is like a dust, who is like, Father Lord, like a vapor, that, Father Lord, you would, Father Lord, have desire. And, Father Lord, we would, Father Lord, bring, Father Lord, bear much fruit and also bring glory to thee. So, Father Lord, the man, we have failed. But Lord, your, your love has not failed. And with your everlasting love, with your, Father Lord, passionate love, unmeasurable love, unfathomable love.
Yes.
And also sacrificial love, Lord. A wonderful way, Father Lord, send thy dear son to save us. And once again, Father Lord, the things that were lost in Adam, that, Father, through thy dear son, our loving Savior. He have, Father Lord, once again elevated us into that, Father Lord, that, that the higher level, in the spiritual higher level, Father Lord, where we would, Father Lord, bring forth fruit. This evening, Father Lord, we thank thee, though we have failed, but yet, Father Lord, you have sent the Holy Spirit, whose Father are helping us, guiding us, leading us, and helping us, Father Lord, to our, our, Father Lord. Though, Father Lord, we fail, yet, Father Lord, you are helping us to, that we may bring forth much fruit. Yes, Father Lord, as that man, who, Father, was able to realize and help that little, a little young boy who, who's, who all the oranges were dropped on the platform. And how, Father Lord, he's collected all the oranges and put it back in his basket and gave him some money and he was able to see the love of Lord Jesus Christ. And this is, Father Lord, what you have desired, Father Lord, that by our good works, that, Father Lord, they may shine. And our good works may shine in this dark, but Lord. We pray this evening, Lord, that I will, by the help of the Holy Spirit, that we may put all the efforts, as, Father Lord, we see your great love towards us. And that will help us, Father Lord, Holy Spirit may help us. That we may bring forth, Father Lord, the fruit, the ninefold fruit of the Holy Spirit. Beginning, Father Lord, with the love, joy, peace, long suffering, and so forth. For our be praised, that will guide us and lead us. Thank thee, Father Lord, for our dear brother. Yes, Father Lord, sacrificially given the time. And, Father Lord, so gladly, Father Lord, willing to, Father Lord, bring for the ministry here so far away places. In the midst of this pandemic, Father Lord, we thank thee, Father Lord, especially, that you have, Father Lord, given good help for your brother and sister also. As, Father Lord, we know, sister is suffering with the author at Spain. We pray, Father Lord, that grace would suffice. We also thank thee, Father Lord, for the ministry that you have granted to brother there in Sheikh Ham, as well as, Father Lord, the Jehovah Shema, Father Lord, in the Sunday evening, among the Muslim converts, Father Lord, that have. And we pray, Lord, this evening, that continue, Father Lord, to bless us, guide us. As you depart from here, thy presence will go with us. And help us, Father Lord, to meditate upon thy words, that we have other, we have brought forth. The notes, Father Lord, praying that the people have written the notes, that they may, Father Lord, refer and, and think about, Father Lord, this evening. For all that will help us. Thank you once again, Father Lord. Grant us the refreshing rest and bring us once again tomorrow morning, nine o'clock, that we can come before your presence and continue our studies. Lord, we are praying, Father Lord, for the great harvest of blessings, Father Lord. At the same time, we may also be mindful, not only receiving, but we must also take some responsibility in, Lord Father, working towards bringing forth fruit. And so, Lord, we thank you for all the provision that that was made for us. We thank you, dear Godfather, all the provision that has come through that loving Savior, our Lord Jesus Christ. So we pray, Lord, be with us, lead us and guide us. We pray, Father Lord, for many of our dear ones, who are sick, Father Lord, at this very moment, we bring them before you. We pray, Father Lord, that we comfort those relations, those who are waiting upon them. We pray, Father, for the speedy recovery. For those who have been recalled, Father Lord, we thank thee and we rejoice with them. We thank you, Father, for the help given to them. And those, Father Lord, who have been promoted in your presence, we pray, Father, for the grieving family, that comfort them. As we know, Father Lord, the conditions are very, very bad, Father Lord. And especially on the east coast and the west coast also, through the cyclone. And that I will help in these difficult circumstances also. Lord be with us, help us, Father Lord, guide us and lead us. Just commit this time into your hands. And we pray, Father Lord, and we commit everything at their feet. And we pray, Father, the thanksgiving in our hearts, the very precious and the present name of our soon coming Lord and Savior, Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen.
Amen.
Now, one to him that is able to keep us from falling and to present us faultless before the throne of his glory with exceeding joy. To the one and wise God, our Savior, be glory, majesty, dominion, and power, both now and even till our Lord return.
Amen.
Amen.